Okay, we'll start the City of North St. Paul City Council meeting for February 15th. If I could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everyone. Boy, this mic is loud. Wow. Janice, take the roll.
Here.
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 The current is present. At this time, I motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Not all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have the consent agenda, and that is the February 1st, 2022 special meeting minutes. The general claims of $327,000, $934,000, and $91 cents. The HRE claims of $355,000, 58 cents. The EBITDA claims of $5,333,75 cents. All MCIT's invisible tort liability waiver.
Resolution approving acceptance of donations received January 2022 and building permit report for January of 2022. At this time, the council member would like to remove one of the items. You can do so at this time. If not, a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Move by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Meeting open to the public. We got one. John Schmal in regards to enterprise funds. Welcome, John.
Evening, Mayor Council. My favorite subject, enterprise funds and the diversion of funds at the end of the year into the general fund. And I became aware of thought back in December when you had the representatives from the religious community be here to give out cards to help out individuals that might be hurting during the Christmas season. At that point, I went, churches, schools, they pay for their electric bills. They pay for the water bills. They pay for all these enterprise funds, an amount of money that a portion of gets diverted into the general fund. And I don't know if they've ever been asked if that was a good thing to do, but they, in a way, they're paying a lot more than I pay if this diversion of these funds into the general fund. But if they've ever been asked as to whether they like that happening. And back in five, six years ago, we were diverting up to a million dollars just out of the electric fund into the general fund. So it's kind of akin to what Mayor Coleman did in St. Paul. They started breaking down special charges for street sweeping, for anything that was normally covered by taxes. And the churches took that to court, went all the way to the Minnesota Supreme Court. And the ruling was that you couldn't do that. If you're going to charge nonprofits, religious organizations for services, anything that comes out of the general fund, you would have to break them down specifically and say, this is the charge. They used to. First off, they just said you had so many front foot of property, here's the charge per front foot for all the things we do. Then the court said you can't do that. You have to say, these are the charges, and this is the charge per whatever we're doing. I saw that on my mother's or the homestead that my brother lives in by seeing the St. Paul tax forms. And they were really strange. They went up, they went down, whatever. But anyway, they, I believe that when you charge these organizations for their electric, for the water, for whatever, and at the end of the year, you divert part of that money that they've paid in into the general fund, you are in a way kind of taxing them in order to provide money from the general fund. So when you make that contribution in Sunday in church, part of that, at the end of the year, when they divert these funds out of the enterprise funds into the general funds, you're charging the nonprofits. So think about that for a minute.
Thank you, John. Anybody on Zoom? Not city business and action items, and I'll turn over to Acting City Manager Brian Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. We don't have anything under the city business action items, but if you don't mind, we can move into reports for the city manager and departments. So I'm going to give you just a quick electric department update.
Is your mic on? Is it just?
Not too close enough. How's that?
Better.
All right. So just kind of give an update. Back in 2021, we started a new overhead underground rewire up, so it'd been east of McKnight and south of Beam, kind of on the Indian Way, Chippewa area. We put in probably close to a couple of miles of conduit up there. We've got some of the wire pulled in, but not all of it yet. Like any business out there today, we're having a really difficult time getting stuff into stock. And we've seen prices go up considerably on a lot of the stock that's out there. One of them is even the meters for the Sentinel Building. I still don't even have all of them in, or the meters for the Anchor Drive Apartments either. And those were ordered back in February of last year, so pushing a year on them now. So it gets kind of difficult. So we have a few things that we're waiting on for material, for finishing that underground job. And just to let you know, all the MNI housing over there, all those units have their power now, so we're complete with that. On the Anchor North side, everybody has their power, except for, like I said, the apartment complex. We're still waiting on the meters for that. This year, we are due for our five-year maintenance cycle for testing, calibrating, and just general maintenance on our power transformer. That one transformer feeds our entire system, so it's kind of a big one. We'll switch over and we'll get fed off of Excel energy while we do that. We should be able to get that done probably in a day, if not day and a half at most. But they'll check the transformer and relays and reclosers and just do some general maintenance. We'll get that going before the summer heat gets cranked up and our loads go up that much higher, so I'd like having that done before then. Just an update on our electric department employees. We have two apprentices now, Cole Tanner and Lucas Newman. They're both doing well. They're both training with their apprenticeship training programs and their books that they have. Cole came with us with some experience behind him, so he started off as a second-year apprentice. And Lucas, who's new to the field, is working in his first-year apprenticeship, and they've been taking their tests and doing well, so it's going well. And as I usually say every time we talk about this, but the city is just very fortunate to have such a dedicated, talented group of guys that we have for the linemen taking care of our system, and them taking pride in the system and just being proactive in anything they see out on the system. So they're really doing well. Right now, we're doing, well, in the winter time, like we always do, we like to focus a lot on tree trimming. That just pays off so well when it comes to the summer storms and branches coming down and ripping wires down. So we continue away at that, but we're also doing system inspection and just finding things that, before they come, major problems. So we're doing a lot of pole change outs right now as well. So, but things are going very good overall, and it feels good to be back to the department.
Any questions for Brian? If not, I do have one, and this is off the topic of all the advertisements I'm seeing right now is for electric vehicles. I'm assuming that as we get further down the line, next few years, I think that's all we're going to be seeing is electrical vehicles. Are we preparing for that, for households to have electric vehicles, and how does that work? Are there private companies out there now that are going to be, you know, installing these stations in their home or garage? I don't know how that works. I guess that's something that, you know, five years down the line, we're going to have a lot more electric use for our city. How are we preparing for that?
That is a large concern that we've been planning for, for a while now as well. Even with the downtown project, I put in a duct line down there just in case, you know, every one of those parking stalls eventually needs a plug-in for an electric vehicle. You know, we have major companies out there like Ford saying by 2030, they are only going to be making electric vehicles. They won't be making combustion engines anymore. So when it comes to a home right now, there's different ways to do it. A lot of people are just plugging into the regular outlet. That's a longer charge, takes a good eight hours to fully charge your vehicle at that point. If you want to go to a 240 system, you can do it in probably three hours. So we have some of the, just a couple of the cities in our power agency that they have specific programs for that. So how you would do it is if somebody wanted to wire up a service that would just be used for that electricity, so where you could time it. So we pay less for electricity in the middle of the night as opposed to during the day. So we could set up a time-of-use system for that. I have had two to three inquiries over it the last probably four years. I say we don't have it, but we're working on it, and it's coming. And then that way, they would just be charged for just that. So if they use it during the off-peak times, they would get cheaper power. But then the other side of that is if they use it during the day, then it's actually higher than what the normal resident would pay for that. That's the whole idea of a time-of-use program for that. But what it takes is you have to have a larger wire to be able to handle those loads going through your neighborhoods. So we've already started that. We've done that in a couple of areas, like gone through Gerald there, between Gerald and McKnight. We went through there and upsized the wire going from pole to pole to be able to handle larger loads. We're just keeping that in mind as we move forward with all of the projects that we do, because, yeah, it's coming. I just read today that the, I think this was a Biden program, he was going to put $5 billion towards the electrical infrastructure of the United States. A lot of it's going to be going to states, so they will do it along interstates to make that. But there'll also be some money for smaller projects. I'm hoping that there'll be grants and things available. We will be selling one more in the parking lot on Sixth Street there with the option of getting another one if we want that. Haven't fully decided on that yet, but at least the option would be if we wanted to put one in later, it's right there. I mean, it would be easy enough to do. So when we redo that parking lot, there will be one there that have a dual feed for two cars. But, yeah, we're going to pick up the pace here in a very short period of time. It's concerning. It's going to be a big change.
So what, so demand for power will be substantially increased, I'm assuming?
Potentially, yeah. And so part of that will be able to absorb because at night, that's when the load is really low. So, and if they time that to where that's when they're charging, we'll be able to absorb a lot of that. Before, you have to worry about upgrading the size of your wires going to the homes and things like that. But, yeah, we have to think about it anytime we're doing any projects.
So our hot, you know, summer days when it's 105 degrees and all the air conditioning is running and people are plugging in their cars, the demand will just, is our system able to handle that increase of load?
The nice thing is when they, when we got away from Excel and buying power from them, and we put our own sub in in 92, we upsized the size of the transformer for a larger load. We have good amp capacity on the four feeders that we have, so that, there was a forward thinking when they engineered that and designed that, so that's encouraging. You know, the rest of it, we can do a little by little. As we see them come online through, like pole to pole, we can rerun wire if it's a smaller wire or wire going directly to the home.
I can see your job getting a little bit complicated in the next few years.
Interesting.
Interesting.
Yes.
Maybe not so complicated, but interesting.
Definitely.
Councilmember Thorson.
Follow-up here, and since we're talking about electricity and plugging in cars, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm assuming you know where does our electricity come from, the different sources of electricity? Just since we kind of have a short meeting, just maybe touch on that a bit so people understand.
So we don't get anything from Excel. The only thing we use Excel for is they're, pay them for their transmission lines to get the power here. But the market doesn't really allow long contracts anymore, just because of the volatility of gas and fuel for making power. We don't have any energy that comes from coal anymore. It's either gas or renewables. Right now, currently, per Minnesota state law, 20% of the power that we sell to our customers has to come from renewables. So we have a lot of smaller contracts. You might have a three-year contract. You know, we can get them from Manitoba. We can get them from, we have a generating plant down in Faribault that has 250 megawatts, 250 million, excuse me, megawatts. So they come from different sources. Some of them are actually bought the same day for looking for day ahead, following the market, to see if you can kind of save money here and there, depending on loads. I mean, there's a lot of calculation that go into that, whether it's going to be windy, so you can pick up off your wind generators to be able to supply a town. So it's a combination of a lot of different things. It's not just a contract coming from a specific generation station. There are a lot of smaller contracts, and that's why we have the power agency that we do for taking care of that.
So is there kind of a rough breakdown of like, you know, 20% comes from solar and wind? Is that where that 20% is? And then what's the rest, 80%? Where's that coming from? Is it?
Natural gas for the most part.
Running natural gas? Okay.
Correct. Yep. Yep.
And is that what they do at the Faribault plant?
Natural gas, yep. And we have the ability to do fuel oil as well in a scenario to where maybe gas markets aren't, can't get us the gas that we need, then we have the ability to switch over, you know, I mean, which was valuable for some of the plants down in Texas when they had that freeze-up. They didn't have the natural gas supplies, and that's why they saw those brownouts and blackouts. But some of them were able to run off of fuel oil, so it's kind of a backup.
Thank you.
Pretty interesting. Anybody else?
You got your order in for the new electric Silverado?
Ooh, not yet. I want to go drive it, though. Have you?
Planning on you coming over and powering my house when the power goes off, so.
I can do that.
Can you speak to maybe the, how many residents are signed up for renewables? Because they see that you can, you know, purchase one, two, $3 worth of, you know, renewables. How is that program going?
Not too bad. Pretty good overall. For overall, we kind of look at it at a wholesale level for all the different cities involved. In actuality, when you go by percentage, there's only one city that does more than we do. Otherwise, we, out of all the agencies or all the cities, sell the second most. So we're doing rather well. I believe it's, is it four or five, 4% maybe, I think? Yeah, it's small, but still, you know, when you talk to people, if they want to put in some kind of renewable resource, more than likely a solar, you know, we can talk to them that, you know, you can get a 100% renewable resource power for $3 a month on top of your bill. So, I mean, some people will look at that as opposed to, you know, spending over $10,000 on a system if that's what's important to them.
Pretty interesting.
Yeah.
Kind of boring during the day, electric? I mean, just. Anything else on, I guess, reports of city manager?
No, sir. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Reports of council commissions and committees. Councilmember Cole.
Silver Lake Improvement Association had their annual meeting on Monday, the 7th. We had a phenomenally fulfilling meeting, very long. Big shout-out to Carrie for not only helping, helping the SLIE get set up and started with Zoom, but being a very active, active member as well, and she walked out of there with a couple of follow-ups, or was it a couple of pages of follow-ups? So thank you again so very, very much. SLIE is looking for two volunteers to serve three-year terms. So if anyone is on the lake and interested, or I don't even believe you have to be, I don't believe the bylaw states you have to be on the lake, but are interested in Silver Lake and would like to be, like to be involved, they are looking for two volunteers to serve three-year terms. It's also easy to become a member for SLA. Go to www.silverlakenspp.com. It is a $25 annual fee, a minimum. They are a 501(c)(3), so you can donate up to as much as you would like above the $25 for membership. And membership is open to anyone. EDA had a meeting on 2/8. Very good, very productive meeting. The Economic Development Authority has a letter of intent to purchase the building located at 2515 and 25177th. The letter of intent, we worked through the fine print and the last details, and I believe we'll be moving to a purchase agreement to be submitted, I believe, before our next meeting, based on the vote that we had, so. Terry, do you have anything different?
Well, we're also looking at setting up a meeting with the EDA, the Planning Commission, and the city council to go over a couple of different contractors that are looking at, looking at that property.
Yep, just two developers that are, that have actively sought after, you know, insight, so. Park and Rec is having their next meeting, next Wednesday night, February 23rd, at 6:30 here at City Hall. I haven't seen the final agenda yet, but I'm sure the approval of the Park and Rec Improvement Plan should be front and center of that. They've been working on that for what feels like well over a year. So I know they're excited to get it done and get it put to bed and get it in front of council at an upcoming workshop. And that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, so the Arts and Culture Commission met on February 3rd. We kind of brought up the discussion of the craft wagon and the logistics around that. I think the Arts and Culture Commission is really looking forward to reviving that and perhaps partnering with the parks, especially in the summer months, on some activities. They're still developing a process of accepting projects. They're also discussing what the financial obligation would be on part of the city, or if we're working with private business, what does that look like? So we're just kind of figuring that out right now. I think that's all I have for the Arts and Culture Commission. Besides, their next meeting will be March 2nd at 6:30. And the Planning Commission met on February 4th. There are new roles. Elaine Barton and John Monge will co-chair. So they'll alternate meetings, and that's what was decided on. They're still working on the sign ordinance. And then we also discussed preliminary plat and variances, but I think that it was overall denied. And so we'll see where that ends up down the road. Part of the concerns from residents, there are a few residents that came out, but they were talking about flooding towards the end of their street and how the plat will be divided might increase impermeable spaces. So there was some concern around that. Let's see. I think that's it. The next meeting for the Planning Commission is March 3rd at 6:30 PM. I think we probably set a record. We almost went to 10 o'clock, so.
Sorry.
I feel bad for Lisa Ritchie. She was, she hung on there.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I attended the League of Minnesota Cities' Advanced Leadership last week. It was a good conference as usual. They talked on civility, media, and crisis avoidance, and some good panelists. A 19th Avenue student-built house is progressing very well. The basement will be poured on Friday, so I will let the neighbors know because it will be, it's going to be loud. So I'll make sure that gets out. It's, they could get the windows in there, but there's a delay, but it's going good. Business Association, we had a very good speaker, Robert Duh, and he talked about the EDA and what the expectations are. And it was, it was a very well-attended meeting, and I think next month is going to be City Manager John Stark, I think. Guess? That's all I have.
And I know you being the council liaison for the student-built home, that it's a good idea to, I'm glad you're on that, to talk to the neighbors, because any disruption of noise and.
I have heard a couple of them that have some concerns, so, yeah. And it's going good. The principal, we're at the century, he's very good about giving an update every Friday what's happening the following week. So that's very, and I know what's going on. Of course, they have been working because they're off, and I think the cold weather hasn't been very good.
Your mic on?
You know, cold weather hasn't been very good to them, but we're getting good, they're getting it, they're getting it done. They actually have a front door on there now, so it's a good start.
Good. Councilmember Thorson?
I have nothing.
General business, well, actually, I do have, I do have a couple of things. Did attend the Highway 120 Public Open House, and I believe John Schmal was there. I think I saw you on that Zoom. So they did an update on the, on the Highway 120 from 94 to 694. They talked about the planning and environmental linkages, called the PEL. So they're looking at, from that corridor, there's four different sections in that corridor that they looked at. It's kind of interesting. They, they said access points. There's 489 access points in that corridor. What they like to see is 88, so there's a lot of access points. So they talk about safety in regards to this, to the roadway. MINDOT talked, and it's not even on their radar for the, for the next 10, 10 years. So four different sections. Highway 36, it's called, Highway 36 and 120 is called a spot location. So that's kind of its own entity. And from that, there's been other meetings with, kind of higher-level meetings with city council members from Oakdale, mayors from Oakdale, actually, the mayor from Oakdale, not the city council members, the mayor of Oakdale, and county commissioners from Washington County and Ramsey County, and then state legislators, really moving forward on regards to that spot location, which is 36 and 120. So that is still moving forward. I did have a meeting with the League of Minnesota Mayors this last week, and they had a couple of guest speakers. One was talking about the workforce, what's happening right now within, within our state and with everywhere within the country of why the workforce is, and it's, I could probably talk for an hour in regards to why, why that's happening. Also had a meeting with John Choi today, our county attorney. And we're talking about the juvenile crime in our, in our area in regards to car theft. So he is meeting with the local sheriff and our local police chiefs. And there's also mayors and council members on that, on that call. And he's really listening, and he really wants to come up with a plan, collaborative plan with all of us in regards to the juvenile delinquents and how they're, they're repeat offenders, and how do you get them off the street? And how do you try to educate them? You can't do that when you're 14 and 15 years old. So that is still moving forward. From that, general business, Councilmember Cole.
I only have one topic. March 1st, 10:30 AM, there'll be a Zoom meeting for basically the Casey Lake wrap-up. It's all the work that Carrie's put into, working with the multi-governmental agencies in the water quality and the aesthetic quality of Casey Lake, along with working with the residents and the homeowners, either on the lake or around the area. That will be. around the area. That will be via Zoom. I don't believe it's on the website yet, so keep your eyes posted, and I'm sure there'll be a, a big spot for it when it, when it pops out, so it'll be definitely visible on the website as well. But keep your eye open to that. That's it for me.
Councilmember Wong?
I don't think I have anything. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
I don't have anything, Your Honor.
Councilmember Thorson?
Nothing.
And I think I have just one, and that is the joint workshop that we just talked about in regards to the property, the Lily property, and that is March 8th. And I believe everyone got a notice, the council got a notice for that. And we'll have members from the Planning Commission and also the EDA at that meeting, and that will be on March 8th. And I don't think a time has been determined yet.
I have a time.
Okay. The email did come out, and I did not see a time. So with that, I don't think we have anything else. So motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.